First item, discussion on the future of city-owned facilities and we'll start with the building we are sitting in.
So the handout that you have, we emailed out yesterday. I think all staff has been kind of thinking and talking about this for a while, force to all of these options together. I think it looks really good, so to say the first item is just the building that we're sitting in, I think we have to consider all these more as, you know, all the buildings with all the options that we have, when you figure out the best use for what we have with taxpayer money in mind and so on and so forth, so. I don't know how y'all want to title this, if y'all want to look through the options or we want to pick them up one by one?
I'd like to very broadly ask some yes or no questions that will help determine some things. Our project that's down the hill.
Okay.
Are we proceeding or not?
What is the status?
The status of it, it's still.
March of twenty-four. Okay.
I'm sorry?
March of twenty-four, still.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, I'm in. Okay.
Is one that here is tentatively scheduled, you know.
I mean, is it looking promising or not? I mean.
I mean, of course, our attorneys are going to say it looks promising, but you know, we're still gathering data. I think there's some other, I don't know much I'm at liberty to speak about it in open session, but there's some other things that are going on. I should say in a separate case that does not involve the city.
Okay.
May factor in.
So, I mean, the reason I ask that is because that has a new council room, has, I mean, then it would, and so I don't want to, some of these decisions are hard to make, like moving from here to the new Truist building, because it's, then in the, you know, if we're going to move in, if we're going to move in across the street, so.
Yeah, and I completely understand that, I think that we're going to have, whenever the time comes to make a decision regarding that building, it's going to be very difficult because of the inflationary cost of construction from twenty-eighteen to twenty-five. So that's going to be, I think it's going to be very tough to swallow. Yeah, I think it's a very good question, yes, we do have to keep that in mind, but I don't.
Yeah, but I mean, at this point, you can't really. So, okay, alright, thank you.
That was just one.
Well, I didn't, I didn't want to get too deep.
It's a valid question regarding the use of these buildings going forward.
I don't want a recording now. In depth though, on that, anyway, okay.
I want to, but I think that, you know, as we've discussed before, that's a decision that the council is going to have to pick up at that time.
Okay.
Now, if we come back and, you know, if you look at that project, we paid out approximately three point eight million dollars towards a five million dollar project. It's going to cost.
Yeah, right.
Double that to finish it.
Right. That's why I'm hoping.
I don't want to say anything more because I don't want it to work, but.
Okay, so, that was, that gets me started, thanks.
So anyway, as I said, I don't, I don't know if y'all want to pick these off one by one, I think the, and then if y'all, y'all want staff, so we probably don't have very many results when we can push it forward. Yeah, I can stall a little bit more. So one of the things that I think you may, you may read in here is something to keep in mind as we discuss the former city hall and the senior citizens center is if you just kind of take a look at the ceiling over here and if you look at some of the building on the other side, I mean, it's kind of disrepair, so we don't know how deep we'd have to dive to get in there, obviously, we know we have a roof leak right here. But to go back in really peel into some of those, Sid, Mr. McKee has got around five minutes behind. So, you know, I think, I think we capture that here, we capture some of the risk that we would see if we decided to take on a rehab project for either this building or the senior citizen's building.
Okay, so, right now, give us the top three pressing questions. Because I know, I mean, you're talking here about moving the water department here, we talked about moving the labyrinth. What's the three top priorities we need to focus on? As far as departments and.
Of course, we've talked for, seems like years now about, you know, the growth in our library programs and the need for more space there. You know, I think outside of that, we also have had growth in our police department. They need to be, they need to have more room in that building, so that would suggest to take moving the water department somewhere else. And then, you know, our council chambers, we can meet, you know, wherever we decide to meet. We just have to make that public.
We could meet at the civic center and if we needed to convene an executive session, just go into a side room, whatever. If not, I mean, if necessary.
We've got ideas to even house it at our new city hall. You know, if the council were to decide, okay, we, this is a risky thing, or we just want to, you know, how much money do we want to put into this for the building next door?
Okay, what are the pros and cons of moving the police department downtown? I know there's pros, what are the cons to move it more focused?
I think they're pretty well settled where they're at, their IT needs are met pretty well right now. We finally got everything set up the way we need to be, firewalls and their dash cams and body cams and all that stuff, so they are well suited out there.
But, but not the water department at all?
No, it'd be easier to move the water department, we have a central scanner receiver over there, but it can take somewhere else.
How much office space do they need for the water?
Very little, you know, they're out in the field the majority of the time right now, they've got two offices that they actually utilize on little break room.
The fire station, we can renovate some. Office space and then.
Street sweeper stays over there now.
Oh, it does?
Yeah, so the only thing we have over here right now is we've got some pipe in there, there's some main street supplies, there's very little.
In the new building.
Storage. Yeah, and then we have a bunch of supplies, doors, window frames for the new building, house over there. Which that would have to stay once we decide to do something with those. Uh, you know.
But can we currently put office space in there and they can at least start?
So, I think you could, you would have to climate control one section of it, so there's the far section, I guess, the furthest west, if you're looking at it, has got the makeup to be able to close in and create an officer previously. Probably have to pull back into the parking lot to install some restrooms. But I mean, I think it could be done pretty easily, and then you've got them house and plenty over there. Bring our sewer machine over there, you know, just all of their fittings, all of their supplies, we fit over there.
And we, we have enough parking space for those required trucks and vehicles.
Should work, then you got on the backside of the building, two hundred boxes.
And the bricks will be gone. One day, underneath two thousand.
On this thing with the old fire station, I did like making it with a calaboose and making it a park, something to attract. I, uh, the more I drive and look at downtowns, the more we need something to draw. And I don't think moving the water department over there will draw to downtown people.
Just one of the things that I left off of there was the motorbike to the van.
But you're not doing anything to the calaboose and the, the park, it's just that.
Building.
Building, correct? The warehouse.
The warehouse.
Sort of. The backside of the warehouse, I mean, it's all grassy areas, I mean, you could, you know, utilize that old foundation where the old fire station works with bricks. As extra market for trucks or whatever, but you could spruce up around the calaboose still.
Can we have a little nicer? Can a calaboose be moved? Is it okay?
I think it'd be historic, moving landmarks, so I don't think so.
Is it, is there a historical marker there on the, okay.
But the police department needs space, it would not take much, you're, what you're saying is for like the ads and restrooms and a couple of offices, they've got space over there that, uh.
Where the old fire station.
It's a slab.
I understand, but I mean, if you're in a have an area where there'd be a part of downtown or whatever, but you still got a building that you can utilize for a certain apartment. That will not take any more of that space. Once these bricks are moved.
Yeah, it's hard to imagine without the bricks now that they've been there so long.
They're probably a year away from. So, so, since we're on this, so, you talked about an old, uh, maybe a great distillery or brewery. Is that in conversations that?
No, we haven't had, we haven't had any interest in that.
Okay. But I like that idea too, but that's what I, I guess I was thinking of. Well, there's other people who have built these down here with different ones too. Yes, I know. And they put it on hold because of wear it on. Do you have funds? Yes.
Okay, so, um, we're not voting on any of this, right?
No, I think if we can get a consensus or a general direction, the staff will bring back some concrete figures and we can make back some possible plans to help make all this work.
Okay, so how about we each, we express some opinions about this building and option one and option two, okay? So then can we go to you guys and say, so what would you recommend? Can we start there? Can we do that? Okay, so.
But before, before you do, I mean, I'd love to hear y'all's thoughts.
Absolutely.
And I can give you mine.
Absolutely, so we'll go first and then.
This is great.
Then we'll end with what you all would recommend for Old City Hall, one oh seven South West Street. There, guys?
Yeah, we haven't talked about it a lot, we may have differing opinions at this point.
That's okay, good.
That's what we're here for.
Okay, who wants to start? No, let's just start Old City Hall, one oh seven, uh, option one. And it's what we just talked about, moving the water department to the, over there. Right?
No, that option hasn't been in this building.
Yeah, in this building. Okay, if this building, as Melissa told me, the roof fell in when she was here this morning, or on, and you just mentioned it. What good is this building to anyone if it's not in shape? And you're, we're looking at two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand. What are the odds of this building being looked at by regardless?
I think that would be a project, we'd have to reach out to some of the real estate professionals. I'll answer that two ways, this kind of hits on option two also. I think if you were to do that, what you would want to do, if we were to sell this building for the building next door, is do it in a way where we have a three eighty agreement with somebody, so it's a private, public partnership. That way we would have more control, the one thing we don't want to do is have somebody buy this thing and just sit on it and not develop it at all. You know, if we did a three eighty agreement, we could either sell it at a discounted rate or offer, you know, a, kickbacks, not the right term, but a rebate on the back end, once they've met the conditions for our agreements.
Gives you more weight as far as incentives.
And it gives you more teeth to say, okay, this will be developed into this at, or at or before this time. And then it helps as a, you know, the project across the street is going to be great, this can be another project to hang through the redevelopment. I'll just put that out there, it was a thought, you got an immediate national opinion.
Well, no, see, they'll also give them tax rate, like I know with, like, the city of Bryan, ten years, I don't know how many, and not a tax rate, but it gave them incentive to meet those milestones when they were building that plant. You know, to do it quickly and do it right, and they ended up, you know, meeting all the criteria, so a decade afterward, they were reaching the benefits, so that, in that case, yes, it would help.
I think y'all know I'm a big dreamer or vision looking person, but we got buildings right now, we don't have anybody hammering us for, I think the old Longhorn is a perfect example that if you were going to buy a building in Caldwell and fix it up, that would be a nice place, just like Pat's Denny's over here, going to be, you can make it a steakhouse, bring people downtown or, or other deals. But we, we have buildings downtown that nobody wants, or they, or they may want, but the owners ask too much and, and then as Cameron said about the Yaravertos deal, but we, we know that was a failed deal and we're moved away from that, so my deal is, i- i- if we have this building up for sale, do you think it really would sell? I mean, we have a, a council meeting room here, we don't have to do any type of rearranging, anything. The bank or, at city hall, let me call it city hall, there's so many city halls that we are, but i- is there any other need that the city would need the front part of this building? In your, in your views, because I, I, I don't know. I don't, you know, I, but like the, uh, as we grow, example, do we need a, a room for code and whatever, I'm just, I mean, we've got it now. I was just saying as we grow. That's my question, there's nobody beating the doors down now.
Well, I agree, I, I see as really, um, Johnson's stuff, because I, you know, we're going to grow, the city and and say we, at that point, need more space, you know, well, we know what's going on down there, but you know, then it's going to be hard to buy something, I mean, if you're looking at the cost versus even building something new or even buying property themselves or something. Or so, I mean, there's a possibility of planning a zone, we talked about that, you know, working on that, uh, yeah, so working on that, I mean, this could serve as a multi-purpose, you know, the court uses it still. Still, because the water department uses that front apartment.
They could, I mean.
You know, uh.
You're going to look at a lot of mud drugging out again.
Yeah, um, but I agree with, uh, David, we want all of our trucks parked downtown, you know. You know, if we can get all the stuff down.
Well, but then if they want, I think the only, if you have them office here and their equipment, so, you know, I know it's only a block and a half, but.
But, but wouldn't their equipment still be at the warehouse, wouldn't they go to the warehouse in their personal vehicles and then get into their vehicles?
Well, just remember that, that's kind of some of the decisions that we're making, not just.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, no, and I'm, I'm just, I'm throwing this out there, not only do we want to utilize our, our buildings to be efficient there, we also want to be efficient with our operations, and I think to be here, drive over there, you know, that's what I'm trying to avoid. You know, even if they're meeting here and is walking down the street then, to go get the equipment out of there, just. But I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to sway anybody one way or the other.
No, this is open discussion.
Well, no. This city hall, I just worked it on, right, I mean, I'm just, you know, two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollars, the whole lot cheaper than one point five million dollars on this, um, the scene, and the thing is, is even though it's old, it may actually be more sellable because it has that historic, you know, look, everything, this it doesn't look modern, it looks like ages modern, right? So I mean, if this building right here, I mean, is top. And there again, we can use it.
How many square feet is this building approximately?
I'm going to say.
Is that with the chambers?
The chambers is on that other building, it is not actually attached to this structure.
No, I'm talking this chamber.
Oh, this chamber.
I'm sorry.
The whole, yeah.
But that's the bottom floor, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But y'all said that there's a lot of work that needs to be done to utilize, say, the floor, is that clear?
Yeah, but that's not that.
Yeah, that's, it's on top of the seat.
Okay, so here's a question, we take these seats out. Okay? We take these seats out and put old shoes, okay? The the water department wouldn't need too many offices, right, a couple? So is there a possibility that we could do some of our programs from the library in this building? And then we have, then we have chairs, they're set up when we leave the chambers. I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, we have talked about that.
We've discussed several times, once.
Would that, would relieve that pressure, other than the fact that it would be in two separate places?
Okay. Falling upon him. If we fix the building, I, I, and we're looking at senior, and how many square foot is that building? Lower half and upper center.
Larger.
Yes, large.
Twice the size of this, it's not the body.
Only, only negative that building is it doesn't have a way to get up and down.
Well, and I don't know what you're going to uncover if you start moving.
You'll lose some dust around.
I, I understand.
That works out, the top and bottom, five, six, eight, thirty, seventy.
And what's the library right now? And if we got a structural on that building and it came back good, e- even the second floor is more than what they're in now, is that right? Am I, am I saying anything wrong? And if it came back structurally good, we're, this is what if. The only negative is, is, is stairs, right, going to dip. I don't know, sixty thousand for an elevator to put in there? I mean, if, uh, Jesse mentioned, what can you build even for two hundred and fifty thousand nowadays?
When we're talking about two hundred fifty thousand, we're just talking about this.
I understand, I understand, but I'm, I'm saying the same thing on the library.
Like moving the library to the senior citizen center, the whole thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, but you're going, but that is, well, without renovations, they're just talking about the building there, a million, a billion, not yet. And then you, you're going to have to outfit with what you need for the bugs.
So what, 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 what would they need besides what they already have, extension of?
There's also a grant, commission grant. Yes, where is the Tarkford grant, so if, if we move the library to a larger location, we have the option to apply for that Tarkford donation grant, which is up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars, and that would cover all of the furniture and fixtures, like, for the library. So like, they just need the building basically, and then a portion where it's not all of it.
But we own that building, right? So we already own a property.
Yeah, the reason we put one point five million on that cost is because we don't know how much that's going to cost because of the admin.
Sure.
When you start uncovering.
But would, but wouldn't you find that out in a structural and engineering survey?
A portion of it, but they would have to probably start taking back some of that plaster off the walls and see what those bricks supply.
But then we have to do the same thing similar to the bank, Truist?
We went there, we, we did a lot of the kind of due diligence work on, you know, before we purchased it, but if y'all remember before we purchased that, when I brought that to council, I had an architect come in and we looked at upstairs, downstairs, and over here, taking all this in, and I want to say that was two to two and a half million dollars.
Can we bring that back, I guess? Look at that?
Sure. It was just basically was an estimate based off the square footage and whatever the cost estimate was for rehab at the time. I don't, I never got anything formally written up, but I mean.
Yeah, well, I mean, we need to.
But talking about this building in the chamber room, I, I think, I'm, I'm, I'm old, maybe I'm old school here, but I think putting folding chairs in, in, in here and would be, become a total headache if you're going to move it for deals for the library back and forth because of the same thing, the chairs get, we have a nice chamber here for people when they come in. It, it's presentation also, I, I, I think.
Do you like the red chairs?
No.
I, I don't care about that, I, I'm just.
If you move, so council meets once a month, and if you move the chairs that are city, at civic center, they're a nicer looking chair in here, you're only moving them once a month out for a council meeting, right?
I think you would, I would say you move them back and forth, I would think you'd get something a little stiffer.
What I'm saying is a chair like that, it doesn't, you're thinking.
Hey, we would like twice a month, depending on what the events, you know.
And there's churches that put those kind of chairs.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's pretty standard, I just just me, I, like I said, we're voicing, but I, I think the presentation, I would like to, this looks nice, but the walls look like they've got mildew on them and everything else and to liven this room up, but we had a pretty good crowd in here the other day, and I think we're probably going to get more and more as we grow and grow, so. But that's just my opinion, and I completely understand if y'all think that this room, but have a building that's that big, if it's structurally and we can redo some of it, then you have one place where that library is, one place. You're not going to the civic center, you're not coming to this building, you're not going to the library, it's one place.
Well, and that, that, I mean, if you, if you are attracting people with kids and stuff down to the downtown, then you're open up for some, maybe an ice cream shop or a, I mean, you, you, then you, then you start helping people to think outside the box and say, okay, man, I have all these kids coming down here every week, and what a great place for a little ice cream shop here. I mean, I know we had a candy store, but the candy store didn't work because there was no kid attraction.
We had the discussion, we actually met with a developer, he said, you got built-in clientele at that point.
Right.
You're bringing people down.
Right. And I know that, I mean, you know, if we do that, the property on twenty-one is a little bit more sellable than this building is here, to be honest with you, but, and, and, I mean, we just have to soak the note till we can sell that property, but I don't know if anybody's bought.
Well, I know the line of dirt is still in the salt of this town.
But it, that didn't have twenty-one access either, so.
But it, I didn't have twenty one access either, so.
And we can't use the excuse, there's not enough parking, because we have a lot more parking here than we have over there. So, uh, and then if this building. Be it maybe water department, maybe has two offices, you know, you're saying track in, whatever, this part would be closed off, would it not? But in the library, if they needed hiding or somebody need rooms to just do their stuff, if they're not up there. They can have rooms down here and be right next to the library, and there's no walking. Okay, there's no walking out in the weather or?
But if you're giving them, what, sixteen thousand square feet?
No, just the, just the top part.
The whole building.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, if you're giving them the whole building.
What are you gonna do with cit- oh, a senior citizen?
You didn't read.
I forgot, what, what are we doing?
But what I'm saying is, if you're, if you're giving the library at sixteen thousand square feet, there is no reason they would need this building. Did the. Like, no office would be here, I think, if you did this building for the library. And did waterworks at that place over there, what would be the reason for this building?
Okay, I'm sorry I didn't read, but it says temporarily if they renovate it downstairs, I didn't know that. Okay, so you would think about moving them there?
That was one option.
It's entwined. But if you gave that, you, your library's done. Your library's done, and it could be for holding large gatherings too. But I mean, they hold those, those, uh, bunches of, uh, three hundred kids and.
What kind of shape is the roof in on that building? I haven't seen leaks like this. We don't go in there that much, but I haven't seen any indication of leaks. It's in better shape than this, and I think the only leaks that we really have here are on this council new part.
Also, that building, I know it's got senior citizens on the front and stuff, but wouldn't that fall into the, we. Are actually improving downtown by having the library, say here?
There could be money for historical restoration.
Yeah. I, I, how many square foot did you say that's doing?
And upstairs is huge.
If it's structural, I, I, in one place.
That's why we brought this, you know, there's a lot of moving parts here.
I'm guessing the first steps are inspections.
We could do that, what did we say, it was about five thousand for the structural?
No, I'm guessing we also want to do all this in. With these little steps, I mean, I'm not sure we want money.
No, I don't think so.
Two or three jobs on, but if we did like, library, we did this first, and then the library, then we sell that for, we got for sale.
The library where it is now would sell quick. It may not be a library, I mean, a building, it might be torn down, but it would sell quick. I think that's, I'm using property. We're doing used to.
Well, we know it's gonna be more than nine dollars per floor, so that's one point six. So, I mean, you can do the math.
It's already got restaurants, yes, it has to.
We do something that size, it's gonna be a big hit, come on. And I don't know about the elevator. You have to have an elevator pit, so you have to destroy, I guess, at least a piece of the slab you have to tear out, right?
I don't know if you would, it would have to be. I don't think, I don't know if all.
No, I was talking about just for elderly people that, like me, going, going upstairs nowadays. Yeah, okay, I can do that too. Well, I mean, they put them in homes and stuff, I mean, I mean, it, it's not, if you watch. Two buildings over here, but anyway, uh.
I like that, I mean, I, I think so, I like moving the library downtown.
I think we'd just be helping to try to renovate downtown if we moved the library here, I think that would be a step to help. Show that, hey, we're committed to.
Isn't there a friends at the library?
They are currently inactive, I just worked over a year to try to get them. Back in, they're the two workers in place right now, they have no ties to the library. Uh, the new, I guess, board members, they, three, she got on, she.
And started.
She's been working, trying to, 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 to library, do more stuff, to be more involved, or. Transfer ownership over, um, so they're working through that, but I don't know if that's gonna happen. But they don't, five dollars, they don't have much money for that.
Well, if you couldn't we possibly, I mean, cause there's gonna be like little learning rooms. I mean, we could auction those off and, you know, this becomes the LPO learning center. Or the non-farious exclusion learning center, or, and get, you know, some sponsors to.
Good idea.
I was thinking, um, Dean Bill Baseball raises sixty, eight thousand dollars a year. I was just, the reason I asked about Friends of the Library is, is for them to do a, a big fundraiser, it's for, you know what I'm saying? Not us to do it, but friends of the library.
You say Donald Trump rally.
But what I'm saying is, I, I think it's been years and years and years since Friends of Library has done anything, and I think they could. They could kick it off, yeah.
And I think, I think, I mean, I think the community would be, as much as this community supports kids.
They would be behind it, I agree.
And you might have a lot, some anonymous that would.
Right, exactly.
Donate.
Okay, so we talked about senior citizen center, do we want to go on that one now? Sort of we did? Okay.
Just the consensus here is really to keep this building, at this time, we figure out as we, we go along, and it sounds like we're. The majority, we're getting them wrong, or we're interested in moving the library, cause that's your biggest thing, right? We asked what the biggest need was. It sounds like we want to explore moving it to the senior citizen.
You could even, they could even have like film room over there, in, in that larger space, training and everything else, so. That, that is an asset since we own it.
Well, we, we, we had talked about doing, you know, another agreement with somebody, like a local coffee place, to have a local coffee shop within the library.
With sixteen thousand square feet.
They really messed it up.
But also with that, with that, um, cost of, you know, where that's gonna be.
You know, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Yeah, you were talking about grants, does, does Grant Works still, or we, do we still use Grant Works? Okay, so are we, is there anything more that out there, because I read about all these. Uh, pools and splash pads and how they use certain acts, and I think you even listed one of them in here. Uh, that we could be looking at that one, if we decide that's the building we're gonna go with. There seems to be so many grants out there that, are we, are we missing it? That's my question.
Or we can check, there's definitely.
Okay, I don't know these things, so.
So, I think we're gonna check, we look at historical brands.
I'm gonna say, a lot of times they have to be deep as a historical structure, or like in a national art history.
So, so the, I guess, for some, is it, we're gonna get, is inspection of the building, is that what we're saying, with seniors?
It's money well spent before we.
And, but this building, should we not fix the roof?
I mean, we're, we're gonna need to fix the roof.
Yeah, because we don't want this just to deteriorate.
Yeah, we, we have to put some more thought into what we wanna do if we wanna keep it, because just having it as idle space is not a good use for it.
So they kinda have the hot mix, flat roof.
No, it's the white layover.
It's a TPO?
But it's been covered. They've like just patched.
Well, originally had the.
Yeah, originally had.
And could you come in and put a slip roof on top of it?
No, I mean, yeah, I guess not, evidently. The TPO has a warranty, so I would have thought that they would, in two thousand eighteen, that would have been fixed, is that correct?
Yeah, no, they didn't do it the correct ways.
What's TPO?
That's our, that's our, uh, TARP that's on currently on our.
Temporary protection.
TPO is a, I know earlier, um. PVC vinyl, that they can actually seam to make it wider. Um, that's pretty much any flat roof application now. Um, the fact that, it sounds like they can. Do this correctly, this is, I bet you they sent a, the guy up there to flash, we probably get, we probably don't have a whole TPO.
What after the meeting, we can go up this ladder? You can go up the ladder and get on the roof. Cause I was turning the vines down up there.
Well, it's probably either turn around roofing or it's probably long stuff. Oh, they got some way, okay, cause there's two in the, I said, in the rest of them.
But it seems like we're, first time, just give the leak stop, even if we have to just, if they can find where it's coming from, maybe temporary.
We've had estimates, they're around thirty thousand dollars. I'll have to go back and look, and then, I think, you know, to your point, we don't wanna keep this as the chambers, then we.
Yes, make it look nice.
Yeah, the, the tiles, the, like, replace the carpet, chairs.
Uh, yeah.
Sounds like it was patched.
I'm sure, we had a habit of band-aiding things.
But, but I mean, did we get a, I mean, my, my own question, I mean. You know what I'm saying, and then.
We could go back and check this here.
Would this be covered under insurance?
No, we filed an insurance claim, I guess.
That means if they paid it, we probably had a deductible, and then we didn't, we passed.
They came out within the last few years before we left, because there.
Oh, God, that was two thousand eighteen, you mean, the roof didn't last for? What type of warranty, any?
Depending what they did.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll look at.
That's your line.
Okay, so you heard everybody up here, now it's your turn, but what are your thoughts? It does matter, it does matter, for us too.
Not, not only in these larger projects, it makes me a little nervous that we're gonna have some large expenses next door. But I, I do understand the point, it was just the cheapest rate of state we're gonna get. So, I'm, I'm okay, this is, you know, if y'all are elected, these are the decisions that y'all get to make, and I just care about. I don't have an issue, we, we've discussed that several times, obviously, we've discussed about. Kind of the historical grants that we might be able to get, some other things to, to do, it's just a matter of, we, we just need help with that direction. Because, y'all, y'all are elected by the public, and, you know, the reason that we're kicking this conversation off is we're gonna finalize budget next month. And in that budget, we have three hundred thousand dollars set aside for library repairs. I don't wanna put three hundred thousand dollars into that library, we're not, we're not gonna stay there, it's foolish. So that's why this conversation is very important, so we can redirect some of that money, if we wanna move it in streets, whatever, do. Or maybe we do those rehabs here, locally, right here in this area, and get these, these, uh, buildings in shape to help. Transition some of these things. That, that's, that's the reason, if, if it's the council's desire to move the library, that's great, I mean, we've talked about that.
Okay, go, you go.
Is there a way to get between these two buildings?
That storage area that was in the back, back there, that's literally in the other building, so where my office is, that hole is where the exterior wall.
So we could, we could knock over, yeah, you could absolutely connect.
Now, that addition was, um, and took part of.
Now, that addition was, um, and took part of the senior center, we'll have to do that.
So have everybody at one spot, that's what I think is better. That's just my opinion, if, since we have rubber state, that we can't even cut sixteen thousand square feet for any amount of money unless that comes back. But if that building is so bad, well, that's, that's bad for downtown, ain't it?
Okay, but then I, I was just thinking about pretend that this is not structural sound and that it is not something we can perceive it. What about building a new library on, no, on the, now I'm gonna check.
I didn't check my head, I'm just waiting.
Be that, uh, on the drive-through block that we already own. Is it enough to build, say, a, a two-story, ten thousand square foot library? There's parking there, it's still downtown, it's new.
I, I think here we have four or five hundred.
On something like that, okay.
I mean, I'm, when you're talking about a commercial project and we need two story, it's not like a one story. Cause I don't think we have, you would have to go up.
I think, you know, listening to, it's great discussion, I, and I think the thing that sticks out to me the most is that you're gonna have to be able to prove if it's structurally sound next door.
And then you either, so that, and that, and then, I've been hearing from your calls. I mean, I think Gary's got a good idea, that I would, we could take this two or three hundred thousand dollars and we could do whatever we need here. We can find out what's, we can get a plan for this, whether it's right or wrong, but at least it gives us some saving money to use that three hundred thousand.
We need, you don't look above the door going into senior citizens, there's no bricks there, so. It's gone. I haven't seen upstairs, but Dan said it's just mom.
It's, it's very large and I think, you know, it depends on how much we have to go back and rewire, you know, what we have to do.
We opened up the subfloor wherever we're up there, and from what I can see, I mean, the lumber's good down there, from what I can see the area.
That's probably true lumber.
Yeah, and it is, um, and I, but I think the thing is, is that just verifying that it'll hold the extra weight of whatever books you're gonna put up there, cause that's gonna.
But if you put rooms below.
Structure.
Yeah, there's a big space, there's, there's a pretty decent space between the ceiling of the wall, and that especially over the kitchen area of the senior, uh, senior center. And, and, uh, so there's a, a large subfloor area there, uh, whether that's the structurally subfloor or not, we, in, in the area that I opened up, it wasn't that large. And I kind of seen it's kind of that way throughout the building.
There could be some other type of structural timbers underneath that.
Yeah, where that kitchenette area, the ceiling drops down a lot, and so I was kind of trying to peek up in there, but I couldn't get the.
My dad owned a store downtown when he remodeled back in the seventies. That, all that wood was one by twelve, it was one by twelve and, and you couldn't drive a nail through it hardly or anything. People were buying that lumber for more than what, surely what Watson was, but they were buying it from there because they wanted that wood. So I'm sure these builders are the same way. Cause it was the building next to the, across Ferry Bank.
In that sense of time, I understand that, you know, you're kind of directing us to look into these renovations down here, kind of the, the top priority.
And I like, I like putting the senior center up with the funds this one for now.
I do too.
That's a great idea.
That's what we.
I did, I.
Because everything together, it really does.
Well, and I think, you know, with your seniors right next to your, hopefully, library one day allows them to, to kind of have some enrichment as well. And hopefully develop some programs there.
I think this is a great plan, use our assets.
The one we're buying from senior center, uh, the agreement that was also in that attachment.
Oh.
Uh, the ECOG, so there's been a lot of discussions about the seniors that bring the charge, city, uh, we just, the people that want here then. So the city has no contract with ECOG currently. Uh, so if we want to, the agreement is up for renewal in September of this year. So if we want to take on the senior center as the city maintaining operations of the, uh, as a staff person to do the invoicing requirements for the ECOG and whatnot. It wouldn't be any extra cost besides that staff person would very understand. Um, but it'd just be making sure that they have their deals, making sure they have their programs and that's the facility. But we don't have anything in place, so if, if y'all don't care, y'all just wanna keep the staff, so we just move them, that's fine, they can proceed with their agreement, just who they have it switched right now. But they're giving us the option to take on if you want. Who's like, maybe five.
Oh, I didn't read it, uh, all, I read the first page and that was enough, uh, sorry, uh, what's your opinion? You, you, you dove into it, you see the pros and cons, so.
I mean, I think the pro is that we would be able to control the, the programming, but then also connect it to the library and those programs. Kind of bring more enrichment to the city, but then also making sure that everything that they are supposed to get from the ECOG in terms of grant funds is actually being allocated towards them, so have maybe more accountability.
There's zero accountability right now. And it's very difficult when we, we take in complaints, so we're, we're not involved at all. They utilize our building right now and that's it. So it, it makes it difficult for us to problem solve on their behalf. Right now, so I think if we, if we took over the agreement, that we, we'd have some skin in the cave at that point. And then we could probably provide better service for our seniors, at least it would be more directions or.
Well, how many people use that? Cause my dad used to go, I mean, it was twenty, twenty-five people at the time. And, and they look forward to that because it gives them somewhere to talk and everything else, um. But if, if they're missing out on money, grants or anything else, isn't that bad? So, I mean, what's the, what's the pro of keeping?
It's just like everything else, you know, everybody's people have been older and they're not able to keep up with what they did, it's hard to find people to volunteer to, to take on these things.
So we'd have somebody in the house to take care of.
We have a staff member that has a little bit of bandwidth.
So maybe COG gets volunteered?
Well, that's all we have here, I mean, other cities, yeah, other cities.
I'm just asking a question on what the.
There's a volunteer that was stretching that place that has the contractual agreement between themselves.
This is a local volunteer, no ties to ECOG. It's not ideal, so that's why I would, I would say it'd be better if we took it on.
Cause there's, so ECOG gives the seniors all that dollar in deals for you and set a down on the program. So the programming set about, just like they were, you need activities, you need utilities, internet, all that, which they don't have. I mean, we provide buildings, we don't have any of that really, any of the, the utilities and stuff.
Yeah, I, I think especially if, if, if this, if all what we just talked about, kind of from your issue, it would be better that it would be in our hands. And when I say ours is the city's.
Well, if, if you pull off what you, you're suggesting, then it'd be better off.
Next, old fire station. So we've gotten to talk about it, yes?
See, I don't, I don't know that we can solve all of these tonight, I've gotten, I think the direction that I, that I wanted to give for now, as in the larger projects, we wanna see if we can utilize what we have down there. Um, I think going forward, of course, get the roof fixed here, let's figure out a plan on how we wanna use this, maybe an estimate on remodeling this. Let's get the structural work done over there and then figure out how we utilize this space. If we utilize the space up front for the senior citizens, we're still gonna need a place for the water department.
Are we not moving them to old fire station?
That would be the plan.
I think keeping them away from the rest of the group here, if, if we're gonna go the route with the senior citizens and the building, then the only option there to give the police, cause you already said to move the police would just be a nightmare, then the easiest thing is a couple rooms and a restroom and for the city to do. And when I, when I mentioned while they go about, I didn't mean they would have to come here and check in and then go get their vehicles. I was saying they just go to where I pick up their truck and then they. Cause that, that way their vehicles are protected also, they're not on the street or anything else, so that's, I wanted to clear that up.
I like really doing nothing. I think it's the same thing, but I would price different sales.
I think. It's not that.
All right, we have, we have, there's space to put them out there, but we're also about to expand that there. We keep that in mind too.
What about, but we don't have that on the front side of the building.
It smells.
Well, I mean, to me.
That would still be, if we did that, that would still be an option, the, do something with the whole fire station, if they wanted the.
Right, right, exactly, right.
Well, they, he's gonna take it, probably at least. Okay, you get all this figured out, so they can temporarily get off the scene, correct? That way we don't have to do anything with it, and then that's another decision a year from now.
Like that.
Well, we can figure something out in the meantime, right?
So, it's a good idea, you already got everything.
You got offices here, we got restrooms, and this is just until we can put, you know, we gotta figure out what's going on.
Yeah, we work, so how many, couple of trunks is left for the water department, right?
Correct.
And restrooms, so. Um, Thomas, where, where is, no, that's for Tomson at one though.
Yeah, Thomas, so he's in the old permanent building.
Tomson?
Yes.
But he wasn't.
In that back spot.
Did he, no. Um, so to renovate out here, or do something out there, right for the.
I think we said to renovate which part?
Uh.
The old fire station, we said fifty-sixty. Well, I mean, there's, there's some possibilities, but let me, so what I'm hearing for the most part is we want to keep the old fire station, it's economic development property. You know, if we had, you know, the brewery or something like that, I mean, let me do some more research on what we can do at the wastewater treatment plant. Because we've already in the budget, there's twenty to thirty thousand dollars, we've got a rehab, the lab facility that we have out there. It's extremely old, past in the lives, so maybe there's a possibility that we just expand off of that or, um.
What about this on a primary shop?
We could do, cause we do have restroom facilities in the lab already, so those will be updated as a.
What I'm saying for offices.
We can, so I'd say we're gonna, we're gonna take a look and think about that.
Well, I'm gonna look, but just, uh, and you can think about this, um, in my calendar, it's not, that, do we have the room or do we have the warehouse ready? To build it, you know, sixty, forty by sixty building, you know, they, uh, you know, something where they can drive one vehicle through the roof and stuff and front the offices, the restrooms. You know, at that cost, you know, metal structures, you know, the, you know, when I'm looking at building a large commercial, something smited, I have to house out of. You know, I know we built that a hundred thirty, one thousand, it's not fifteen hundred dollars, but.
Before my job, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I was like, well.
That's not, that's on.
The permanent building?
That's back, that's on.
So let, let me look into the water department stuff a little bit more, cause also as we bring along this bond project, we're doing improvements to wastewater plant, maybe that's the time that we put something in permanently over there right now, where you can temporary something.
I like Cameron's idea of them having, move them to this office while we're doing all the research and get them sprawled and move them somewhere else. But, uh, that, that sounds like a good plan, cause that's my opinion. Yeah, Charles was already drawing up on his board and what he's gonna do and everything else, so I was in there and that's.
Okay.
Okay, do you wanna talk about civic center and the chamber project? It's a kind of no cost thing or low cost thing.
I'll have to go back and look, um, I will just.
Start with the chamber though, no, full house.
Good, you mean?
Start with a little house, you know, my opinion on it, there's a better use for it.
Yeah.
I think the opportunity is, is there to utilize that as, as kind of a different, well, we got some of the other kind of check museum. We've got the museum right now that sits inside the civic center, you know, could some of that stuff be moved to that house? And then we set up the other bedrooms, cause essentially, y'all, y'all know the history of this better than I do. But, you know, do we set that up as a traditional house with those type of room setups? Add some wilts or something, it's also kind of near and dear to, to call, well, what, you know, on the. This is not my thing. It's hiring me to run the city, not, not be an interior decorator.
Hey, sorry.
I'm trying, you, you understand what I'm saying?
Exactly what you're trying to say, that was just.
Go ahead then.
I know exactly what you were saying, to set up the house, like, set up the kitchen, like, and use the stuff that's in the museum from a kitchen in there, yes, I totally get it. I think it's a brilliant idea. Like the picture house, or the check museum.
The check house, yeah, so the.
You don't have to speak up.
I know, but don't know the Texas check. Virginia wants to get, so they bought that house next to the chamber house, and they were gonna renovate it, well, it's possible renovations are outrageous, so they tore it down. So there is the opportunity to also, you make an agreement with them, so that they have a house and let them move into that house too. Keep the museum in the civic center, when I go to talk about senior center, anything else can be down there. So then that way they have a place to have the check, you know, like, but, basically, then they can do that property that they bought. Maybe, I don't know, maybe something, a trade for it.
But is that gonna, is that house big enough for all what they're gonna bring, all their records and stuff?
I don't know, that's why I didn't, I just thought about it, I just know we're talking about museum moving in there, like, that would be. I don't know, that's why I didn't, I just thought about it, I just know we're talking about museum moving in there, like, that would be.
The only thing, I've talked to the mayor about it, and I, I see her every now and then, and, uh, the, if, if, if you're gonna move or offer that building to the genealogical.
Genealogical.
Thank you, uh, people, that's great, but if you, if we were moving that museum
Museum stuff in.
To the house and not having people there, if something happened, I mean, one thing was stolen or broken, she'd never get reelected. They would blame her, because.
But you're talking about not during operating hours, you're talking about like a genuine break-in?
No, going, if nobody's there.
And that's the difficulty with doing that with a museum, is you're gonna have to turn it over to more of a volunteer or institution of staff.
You can't leave it open, because I mean, somebody says, oh, that's neat, I'm gonna take that. And it only takes one, and the person, family that donated that.
Okay, well.
You can put it all behind glass.
Okay, so when someone visits the museum at the civic center, is Chad walking behind them like this? It could very well happen in the civic center. Same thing, if someone's gonna steal, they're gonna steal.
But it's not in.
Well, it is. But you wouldn't let someone enter the museum. What I'm saying is, if you, say you've got Chad working the counter, and there's nothing else going on, and someone wants to go through the museum, couldn't he just go unlock? Or do you say hours of museum are x date, x time? Does it have to remake, the, the museum at the courthouse is not open all the time? Crichter House Museum is not open all the time? Check Heritage Museum is not open all the time? So none of those open museums are open, only on specific dates and times. So does ours have to remain open all the time?
But if we're not, if we're not moving it, it doesn't matter.
But what I'm saying, if you moved it to the Vicicall House, if you moved it there.
What is the point of, at the civic center? Or when, when was it established or formed or?
Because it's a civic center, just as something.
To create the visitor.
Experience.
And I've been there twice, and I have met two people that were going through the museum, and they were from Caldwell, hadn't been to Caldwell in thirty years, and couldn't believe how Caldwell had the fire station and had this civic center and other stuff, and I spent, what, probably thirty-five minutes with one of them, uh, going over what all the city's doing. So, I mean, people do go through there, but I'm not there all the time, so I don't know.
To your point, it helps us to keep that as a visitor center as well, and if we're not moving the seniors there, if we're gonna, if the plan is to utilize this space, then there really no reason to, to pull that out, which your idea of the genealogical society being in there works as well.
What's gonna happen between the city and the chamber at that point? We're gonna terminate our agreement.
We don't have an agreement. Well, we do, but it's from two thousand and five.
So would you sell the house or lease the house to the genealogical?
What the ramifications are gonna be if the city, you know, because the chamber is another arm of a visiting center. So I'm just asking a question, and we are the largest city in the county, um.
But the name of it is now called Earlson County Chamber of Commerce.
Well, it's not. Yeah, it's out with.
In the agreement, through the agreement, it was supposed to be just chamber, Callwell Chamber of Commerce.
But now it's called Earlson County, so, and it's, the chamber benefits not just businesses in Earlson County, but the chamber has members from Brazos County, Washington County, Lee County, all over. So my question is, why is the city of Caldwell supporting something that that entity is supporting all over? Does that make sense?
So op, option one, I think probably hits on what you're talking about. I mean, if we wanna keep the chamber in there, we restructure the lease and establish an agreement.
And the agreement number seven says the name Earlson County Chamber of Commerce, Chamber of Commerce, one I agree.
That's what it's called now?
The way I read it is it's, uh.
All signs and other identification refers to said location as Chamber of Commerce.
Well, I hate to keep going back to when my dad and, when they were trying to attract businesses here. They, the chamber actually acted like an EDC, that's what they did, and, and they didn't have the rules that they had nowadays, because, uh, Keller Ladder Factory that moved here, they all offered, my dad moved to Florida, and the guy said, well, we'd love to, but we need a second building the same size, and they said right on spot, no questions, didn't have authority, we'll build another building like that. He's, they said, they're moved to Caldwell. You can't do stuff like that nowadays. So the chamber, but back then, that's why it was so important, but now it's, it's, it's important.
Different function.
Different function.
I mean, there's been talks at EDC meetings, too, about the function of the EDC changing a little bit, too. So if we wanna put a hold on that one, and we start drafting a lease, I mean, it's, it's up to y'all.
Most chambers pay a lease.
Well, most are, it's associated with their city. So either their house or the same facility is, like, the senior center's now whatever, or they pay something, they have it all built in.
If, if we lease it, can we put stipulations in there that they can't support the sign when sender boughts? I mean, a chamber's supposed to be the first place people go to ask questions about your city, is that not correct?
Or inquire you about the business.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Man, I hate to, honestly, if, if we start charging rent, it's not gonna be good for us.
Okay, but my.
And I understand that we haven't charged her, charged them in years, but.
Okay, but so what is the city of Somerville and the city of Snook, who are reaping the same benefits from the chamber, what are they putting into that chamber office? Nothing. So why is the city of Caldwell and not even the county solely responsible for the Chamber of Commerce?
They were, at one point, they were helping support the chamber, those two cities that I, uh, that was back when I was active with them, I'm not active anymore. I can't get you. But I know it wasn't enough, wasn't enough, wasn't enough for the city of Caldwell to support it, so they, they roped in the, and made it the Earlson County Chamber of Commerce. Of course, then that just raised a bunch of negative stuff, and then eventually, I mean, it gets focused more on the city of Caldwell, which, they still run the, the Callwell.
Isn't, isn't that the reason the EDC is thinking about basically dissolving and each city have their own EDC?
I think there's a lot of different ideas out there.
But I, like I said, I go to meetings, and there, year, year and a half, and I went to three, and they were still on the first meeting that went to a, a year and a half later, so nobody makes a decision.
Do you guys have an opinion about the Chamber of Commerce office?
I mean, I'd have it here if it's possible, it's not a bad thing, definitely a fully built building at that point. But, uh, this is probably to work that, this is good, you know, downtown, um, but.
Yeah, I know it's a touchy deal, and if not, we, we at least, we still need to restructure the lease if they stay there to where, you know, they're gonna start taking care more of the things, you know, just to have more accountability and responsibility.
I think they're in the civic center, the whole thing is the civic center is in.
Well, we make that work, too.
So I, I thought is if you don't charge them rent, then what if housing civic center, but then let them take on the responsibility of making the civic center alive, to employ some rent and rent.
That'd be two more people.
Okay, so, so tell me how that would work.
Let them handle, let them handle all that. I mean, it would be a lease agreement, but instead of, they change money, they would be basically student staff.
And why you want to, if that's what you have.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of that unless they report to me.
Could you?
I mean, I don't know how much space they need.
So.
I believe so, and they're using a couple offices.
The front, then the center, and that one of the bedroom on the back corner, where, and then where the EDC used to have office and the other room, that, I guess the whole thing, other than that back room is in use now.
Is the majority of the storage there?
Yeah, I'm sure it's storied now.
So when you walk into the civic center, is it called the Vicicall Room? There's a black curtain there. Is that a large enough space for Susan, the director, to be housed in the civic center? So you're not, you're just moving them, you're not, you know?
Well, well, it wouldn't be enough for all the personnel. No, she's got two.
I mean, if somebody goes to bash them, they go to basically their visiting center, which slices their civic center, which would, I think, would get more people in the museum, maybe get more, but then they would probably have to do one of our, um, meeting rooms.
No. So when you walk into the civic.
I know where you're talking about.
It's a little curtain, and it's kinda hidden.
Yeah, but we, we, we have, that's where we held our training the other day on annexation, and so only like that the room we're talking about, that four chairs, we, I mean, we could barely, Melissa and I were in there, and that was, that's about it.
You can move the chamber into.
No, no, I'm saying for, for events like that, if we're gonna be training, we could.
Yeah, but I was saying for office, it's, that it's not, it's not our office running, it's really a, a table and four chairs, and the, we have a computer to just look at. If you've got three personnel, you gotta have computers and everything else, I would assume, to run the office.
You know, uh, you mentioned about this building, Vicicall House, does it need some work?
I would say so.
And it needs a professional sign. So if these upgrades were done, and, I mean, and say we painted the brick, you paint the brick, it looks nice. Or say we did some renovations, so, and then we try, we, we, we do the renovation, we make, make it more professional, or better than college, and at that time, we tap into an agreement, and, you know, we're in the reprints on this, and this is what we're gonna talk about.
Move, and then you got ten, something, consider as well.
We have to look.
Have you been in the building?
No, I haven't been in it.
I'm not sure how much we would have to do to renovate that, I mean, if we go back to looking at ADA improvements.
Yeah, I mean, you're.
Things of that sort, you know, and at that time, is it cost prohibitive to, to dive into that?
Yeah.
It's on the backside of, I mean, I know there's storeroom, could they find spare storage there? What else is back there?
Back of the civic center.
That's, uh.
There's dressing rooms.
Yeah, there's two dressing rooms, and then that restroom, and then there's a large, uh, storage area for all our table chairs, and then on the other side, underneath the handle, there's storage.
We put the chamber there. And then use the, I mean, redo the doors, and that way you have a door to the chamber, and, and you advertise it on that side, and you have the civic center on the other side, where they can come in, do a door, whatever they want to. There's just more room there than up at the front, where, where the museum is for the chamber. And we're not gonna use the dressing room, I mean, how many places are we gonna have in the civic center, or dressing rooms? So all that back, back there is just wasted space sitting there. I know a store in my line is supposed to, I appreciate it. I really appreciate it, but I think we could find something else to, where some other place to store that stuff.
I mean, yeah, I think I'm in the library, I might have the storage space, and that library stuff is there.
Right, right. But I just think that there's more room back there if we change those, I mean, you have to change out the doors. Can't have those solid doors making more attractive for people, because there's just two or three parking spots right there that you can park, park right there for visitors to come for the chamber.
Let us look into that one, because it's not extremely high on my priorities. Building that we own.
But, I like I said, that they, the only thing that bothers me about that is, why is the county, Snook and Somerville not paying into that? Could she not ask them, hey, the city is providing this building, can you chip in, uh, two hundred dollars a month for rent from Snook, Somerville and the county?
I don't know, eighty-six still pays something.
Five hundred a month, isn't it? The city does not get the money.
Yeah, but at that point, you think, so will the stuff that just, that was pulled out of their own, or have their own office?
It's too cheap.
Yeah.
There's gonna be like an ILA established, like, if we have to make terms, at least, that it's a position of an ILA being a entity to us, because we're the ones that are providing the space, something like that.
I think that at least, I think they were having some of the problems, I kind of referred to, financials, so. I don't know, they are here all up here, I just heard this.
They had an audit, they said the audit turned out good, so I don't know what good means, it, you know, it could be negative number two, you know?
I think COVID kinda hurt them, you know, that was a few things, and then they're trying to recover.
Inflation's probably hurting them now.
Well, inflation, I mean. But I do, I feel like that these other, because I think we asked her the last time, you know, that we gave them hot funds about the other cities, and I think she was going toward, you know, to them, because they agreed to the hot funds. I don't know why they wouldn't agree to help house or, you know, I'm sure we wouldn't over.
Well, I just saw, I just happened today, I was, I'm trying to get everything filed away, and I saw the, the last time, uh, one of them, she asked for thirty thousand dollars on the hot funds. And of course, you know, we've since set limits.
Well, hopefully she knows, she's aware of that.
We'll, we'll, we'll do some communication with her and see what staffing needs are, and kind of space needs, and go back there and revisit them.
Okay, great, we've got a lot of ready building, no need to discuss, right?
I think we, yeah, we have direction on that, it's the one that can work out here, sure.
Okay. Discussion on designating a specific day each month for the council to conduct a workshop meeting separate from the monthly council meeting. Okay, that was my suggestion.
I did not send that. But my, but my wife was in a hurry, and she gets my computer to send that, so.
Because we have things separate than official city business to talk about, and that includes projects around the community, items just like this today, and I would just like to set a specific day, preferably not a Tuesday, that we can meet, and if we have nothing for the agenda, then it would simply be canceled. For like, a Wednesday at five thirty PM, a Wednesday at six, once a month. We could do it, if we're meeting on a third Tuesday, we can meet on the third Wednesday. And just, if y'all have any input on that, appreciate your discussion.
I don't know how many Mondays and Wednesdays will be available.
Okay.
And then, I don't know yet what days, I think they have these volleyball.
Tuesdays and Fridays.
Fridays.
It doesn't have to be Wednesday, I'm just saying.
Nathan's playing volleyball here, so it's Thursday.
I'll just not decide now.
Who's your favorite player?
Two weeks. Right now.
Volleyball.
Volleyballers. On Tuesday. Yeah, I'm, I'm back there again.
Everybody's somewhere.
And Tuesday, volleyball is just a temporary sport, you know?
Well, is anything on Monday?
Okay, but like I said, just, is it even something we want to do, guys? Is it something that's needed? Is it something we want to do? Or do we want to do them just random like we did today?
Well, I don't think it's a bad idea, but I'd like to keep it on the third.
The third of the month.
Third of the month, whether it be that Wednesday or that Tuesday. I plan my whole year around all that. You know, because I submit it all.
Sure.
So you're talking about the third Tuesday.
Is the main.
Yeah.
And then having a meeting on Wednesday, the third, is that?
Yeah, either the one, or, and there might not, there might be months where we don't have any. Right?
Sure. Or do we want to just do them randomly? It doesn't matter to me.
Can we consider this, like, maybe we schedule two months at one time, do you see what I'm saying?
Sure.
Because generally you're because there are certain parts of the year you're doing more and stuff like that, so like, right now, up until probably after budget is released, you know, it may need to be more frequent, and then you get the summertime with people vacation, whatever, I mean, I'm just making a comment, but maybe we set two instead of one, because we generally have more to talk about than-
Right.
Gary has plenty.
I got plenty, but, 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 I have, I, I was just mentioning, Melissa earlier, I, I have more ability to discuss if I was out in the crowd than I do up here. I can't bring up something that's not on the agenda to discuss, and y'all have great ideas, as proved tonight. So I'd like to bring stuff and then y'all try to-
Provide input.
Input to make it better. I don't care if my idea is not right. Your idea may be the best thing in the world, and I didn't even think about it, but we can't even talk there. And if I go to Camden, poor Camden sees me, and he, he probably gonna wanna keep going out the back door. Yeah. And, and, but I, but, but, James- Since we're, since we're talking about this, James and I have date night on Sunday night. We ride around Caldwell, and I have a list of numerous things. And so I, what I've done is I started using the reporter. Just put, put it on the reporter, but there's things that I'd like to be able to address with y'all. Y'all may have a great, better idea than me going to Camden, and then Camden, we, it's just us.
Well, no matter how we establish the workshop, I mean, what I'm hearing is we got a dedicated date, or we continue to do it the way that we have, and we say, we need to have a workshop, what date works for the council? So that's, that's, that's the discussion here, the discussion that you're having, it really doesn't change that much unless we put those items on the agenda.
Right.
And in that case, you can sponsor it, you gotta have somebody else that wants to jump in with you to, to add that.
So we, I hate to ask you, but should I bring more stuff to you?
I mean, you can, or is it working to do the, the citizen reporter?
Well, some of it is, is not that type of discussion.
You, you can start with me.
Yeah, but like, uh, just talking about dinner, I'll ride around with you on Sunday night.
You don't do it, we do sometimes do it, and that's it.
You're welcome to ride with me anytime.
We can start having those discussions and see how.
Because I, I just want, there's things, you know, and you don't, I know you can't see everything. I know you can't. Nobody can. But there's things that, that are, that I have, like I said, I'm still gonna need to talk to you sometime this week, but it, it's just things that, like tonight, the discussion was so good to hear other people's views.
Is that like a email blast or a list?
You can't. You can't. Yeah, that's it. No. Did you not go to training? No, I'm glad we're, I'm bringing this up, because I, I'm telling what, that, that there's things that, that I think would make the city better and, and low costs.
I understand your frustration, but here we probably, we probably start with me, that would be, you know, proper, so we can have the discussion.
I, I think that's a great idea.
So you can't even comment about something that make anybody aware?
I mean, some things you can, and the administrative elective, but I'm, I'm gonna defer to you on that.
And usually that's just you're doing any kind of thank yous, appreciations, uh-
Public announcements.
Public announcements.
To answer your question, is I see this issue right here, and we can't discuss it because it's not on the agenda.
Thank you.
Well, okay, maybe not there, but just to make somebody, other people aware of it.
Yeah, we can do that, we just can't-
I mean, yeah, I mean, I wouldn't reply or anything, I mean, I would, didn't notice, didn't notice that when I saw that. You know, maybe just-
Oh, God. Oh, come on, Cameron, Cameron, that's a bad idea. Don't give him any suggestions either. No, I'm just saying, it, really, it's frustrating to me that we can't discuss it.
Well, you have to keep in mind the open records.
I understand.
The Act, it's, because you want to be transparent with your citizens. If you discuss things that are not on the agenda and they are aware that you discussed it, then you're going against that Act.
Yeah, and I don't want to pay a thousand dollars behind where.
Yeah, you want to make sure that your citizens are aware of everything you talk about.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, you, you know the rules too.
Okay, so how about we start with Gary, this deal with Camden, and then establish things on the agenda. Yes?
Yeah, we-
Very good.
And it won't be one or two, like, every time, Kim, and it won't be the list, but just to start working on. And some of them, you may say, we can take care of that.
Next, administrative elective officials report.
So, so on that, it's, it's the way we normally, if the agenda's put together-
On Friday morning.
Yeah, on Friday morning, but it's either, if it's the worst, it's either I put it on the agenda, or if it's, or if it's our, our two council members, and they'll come together. At least, because then at least we know we're gonna have a conversation, just one person going, I want to put these hundred things on there, and nobody wants to discuss it, it was useless, right? If it's not going anywhere, then there's no need to be a bringing. So that's, that's why we've got that set up. I'm happy to sit with you, and we figure it out, figure out how we want to put it on the agenda, if it requires second session, just talk about working through those things, and that goes for anybody else who's got one.
One out of five months.
If it, if it's a project like that, I'm, I'm gonna be involved, probably already have it on.
I don't have anything. I don't, I don't have anything, because I'll be talking to Camden, so.
Uh, mark your calendars for August twenty-seventh. That is the fourth Tuesday of the month, we have a council workshop session on the RCP grant, so that's the planning and, uh, planning building codes, water damage prevention coordinates, and so, so that's.
Did you pass it?
Yeah. Oh, I did, I did pass my-
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so I'm gonna certify as well. So I know that's a good thing.
It's a good thing.
Um, but yeah, so five thirty at the civic center on, on the twenty-seventh. We are sending out notices in the utility bills, front is English, back is Spanish, go to every utility customer. So if you get a call about it, that's what it's about, it'll be going out tomorrow. So, uh, we will do a notice on social media, probably two weeks before. Uh, it should be posted on the website tomorrow, but I wanted to make sure that everyone in the community was aware that we are having this discussion and this conversation.
To, to piggyback off of that, so I go, we'll be thinking from now to then, some of the things, take a look at the variations that we've done in the past, you know? Uh, what, what kind of things like that do we want to encompass in the development of this org? You know, we had the developer come talk to us today about, you know, what's the minimum lot size I can, I can put in here. You know, of course, we, we know what's established right now, but this is a newer subdivision. So, you know, we, we have conversations like that at this meeting, we may bring the concept of this particular neighborhood back into earlier meetings, to move this down the road, but keep those things in mind.
If you wanna Google a hot topic, it's planned unit developments, just Google that, and then look at some cities and see how large. And that might give you some idea from now, that could establish some, some more things like this, particular stuff.
Planned unit developments? What else you got?
That's all we got.
What was that TPPA last week, it was really good?
What was that, Sue?
Texas Public Power.
No, I have to, oh boy.
Uh, the open house for the city hall, uh, we decided to move it to later in the fall, maybe October, I think we talked about. Um, and we're gonna do more of a citizen appreciation.
Appreciation. They'll call it an open house.
Right. So we'll have, of course, refreshments, and then maybe do a scheduled, anyone who would like to visit the city hall or take a tour of the new building, we'll do a scheduled time throughout the day so that people can attend, and that way we have the manpower and make it easier on staff, so that's all I have.
Uh, last concert is the tip. Um, it's gonna be a lot of fun. Everybody come on out.
So, we have this session right here.
Whatever, if you, if you've got something that you want staff to look into, or you've just got an announcement of, I love the city of Caldwell.
Well, hey, move on.
Oh, my words.
But, um, I can wait sometimes actually to be updated on, uh, could you do a progress with me?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, because you're asking me directly, and I'm providing the response, it's not something that-
And whatever the discuss-
It's a discussion item, no, I think that's very-
So for the, for the August regular meeting, we should have the details for-
We should have both GLO projects come back, we should also have the flood study, the extended flood study come back as well. We've already heard some of the results on that, so all of that will come back in August.
Okay, and, um, the two studies, that's for the tank, it's a problem, and-
And then Temple Street. Hopefully with that, we've already, we've kind of seen a preview of it, we're looking for some, uh, pricing quotes to put some of that into place already, so hopefully we can bring that in August as well.
Okay, that, that would be good, that would be good.
So what it looks like right now is that culvert there on Temple Street is actually a bottleneck, so we need to remove that, and the recommendation is to leave that open ditch, like where it is in Thomas Alors House, all the way until it runs out through the city.
Um, basically, that's what, years ago, there was a reason when they had one, and they had an interior left to design that. So metal frame with concrete piles on each end to stabilize them, and with, with timbers on top. Yeah, but the frame is, you know, structured good, it's very nice with the timbers now. But, uh, so at that point, that's what we were, we request for the, body on that area, but some type of structure on it.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll bring all that back, and that's kind of what we're looking at, first step is gonna be getting that culprit out. Then we'll stabilize that, with that culvert there, what you see is a lot of channel circling through there, the water can't get out, so it turns and just start there, road, that road there, Temple Street. So we, we need to do something sooner rather than later.
Yeah, because I was talking about cleaning back out, but, you know, it's so wide already, it's, it's years, it's swirling, and-
No, we're actually, I should put dirt back in.
Yeah, dirt, I actually said clean, dirt, go back in.
Yes, right. And then find a way to stabilize that.
And then we should get some of that as well. There's a couple of things.
All right, we have, uh, we're just walking adjourned.